UBSUDDLIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
...stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with the deliverance and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please, Mary.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Pure.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messing.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. Is there any changes, County Council? Okay, all right. Any questions from the public on the Consent Agenda? Any questions from the Board?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes. Okay. Now we get into special presentations. Proclamation to Cassidy Esparanza, recognizing April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have a proclamation, I think, here. Is there Michelle Downing?
Okay.
You'll get to read it. All the way as a county view of a word of super proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2023. Whereas the tragedy of child abuse and neglect affects every community in California and touches the lives of far too many citizens regardless of cultural, ethnic, or religious or socioeconomic level. And whereas the threat to our children's welfare is demonstrated by a steady increase in the number and the seriousness of reported cases of child abuse and neglect. And whereas if our children are to be productive adults, they should have the right to have childhood free from neglect, physical abuse, sexual molestation, and exploitation. And whereas it is recognized their primary prevention programs designed to work with children themselves, their parents, and caregivers within the community are successful in preventing first-time abuse situations. And whereas early identification and intervention are essential to successfully interrupting the generational cycle of abuse and neglect, collaboration among professionals, concerned parents, volunteers, and policymakers can help reduce the level of child abuse and neglect in our communities. And whereas dedicated volunteers and professionals are working to decrease the incidence of child abuse through prevention programs and coordination among agencies delivering services to child abuse victims and their families. And whereas the observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an excellent opportunity for all citizens to reflect on this tragic crime while redirecting themselves to taking an active role in child abuse prevention activities in their community. Now therefore, the UBA County Board of Supervisors proclaims April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the county of UBA encourages all residents to join with the local community efforts in keeping all children safe, strong, and free.
Thank you so much.
Wanted to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you to the county of UBA Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your support. Officially making child abuse. I'm going to do something a little unprecedented. I did put little headbands on your... I would love if you guys put it on so I could take a picture of the support from you the county.
Okay. All right. Only for you.
You want us to come down somewhere else, like over there?
Huh?
Oh, mine's broken.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much for everything you do for our children. All right. Next item is 142, Receive Annual Public Health Officer Update.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board.
Morning.
Thank you for having me here today to present an update to my 2022 goals and then present for you my 2023 goals. So, as I noted, I'll provide you a status update on the previous year's goals and then my current goals for 2023. I just wanted to call out that these are the 10 essential components of public health services, and every goals of mine is really informed by these 10 tenants of public health services. So one of my 2020 goal was for the completion of the Community Health Assessment for UBA County, and I'm proud to say that we did accomplish this goal. We had a Community Health Assessment kickoff meeting in June 2022, and then between July to November 2022, we were able to gather very robust community input regarding our Community Health Assessment. More than 996 community surveys completed, 10 key informant interviews, and 10 focus groups, with five focus groups within each of the supervisory district, and five targeted focus groups focusing on various vulnerable population. And that culminated in the completion of the Community Health Assessment, otherwise known as the CHA, in February 2023. So for this year's goal, we intend to complete its complementary subsequent component, which is called the Community Health Improvement Plan. We held a kickoff meeting on March 29, 2023, to present the key findings from the Community Health Assessment and to kick off that complementary step, the Community Health Improvement Plan. Three health priorities were collectively selected by the 40-plus attendees at the March 29 meeting. Those three health priorities are healthcare access, mental health access, and the built community. These three health priorities will then inform the work of the three separate work groups to generate what we call goals, objectives, strategy, tactics. And we project to complete this Community Health Improvement Plan work plan by August 2023, and then we will publish the entire work plan on a publicly available dashboard for an entire community to be aware of the work plan and to hold each of the lead entities accountable for that work plan. Another 2022 goal that I'm very proud to say that we have had resounding success is that in collaboration with the Sheriff Department, UBA County Jail, and Well Path as a jail medical provider, we were able to initiate what we call the STD Opt-Out Testing Program in September 2022. And then by January 2023, we were able to expand the program to include a part-time nurse to provide linkages from medical and behavioral health services. We were also able to embed part-time social workers to provide linkages to social services such as Medi-Cal enrollment, CalFresh, AccountWorks. My 2023 goal is to continue this very successful program. We are also in discussion with Aventus Health and Riteau on a contract to provide linkages to care for homeless clients who test positive for STDs because many of these clients would present to the emergency department and leave before they're able to get appropriate STD treatment. We also will continue specifically me to provide medical education to all healthcare providers locally regarding the latest 2021 Centers for Disease Control and Prevention guidelines for STD management. Another goal that we have fully accomplished is to fold in a COVID-19 contact investigation tracing entirely into the communicable disease unit. Disaster preparedness is very, very critical, and one of my 2022 goals was to update, and I'm here to say proudly that we're nearly complete in updating all med-health disaster-related policy and procedures. For 2023, I continue to participate regularly as a med-health lead within UBA County Health and Human Services Department's Disaster Planning Team. And next steps for the next several months is for me to work closely with a care and shelter lead on disaster response training exercises. So some of you might have heard of CAL-AIM, which is an initiative by the Department of Healthcare Services, and I have served throughout the past year as the secondary CAL-AIM County facilitator for both Sutter County and UBA County. In that regard, I provide guidance and linkages between the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans, currently Anthem and California Health and Wellness, to local partners, including healthcare organization, community-based organization, and various other local entities, governmental entities. My 2023 goal is to assist our local healthcare and community-based organization with the Medi-Cal model change. So as you recall, in January 1, 2024, UBA County will be transitioning from a regional to planned model of Medi-Cal managed care with Anthem and California Health and Wellness to a county-organized health system that you all approved through the ordinance to partnership health plan. So I will continue to serve as the point of contact for UBA County Health and Human Services Department with partnership health plan. In this regard, I will share information regarding the transition to both county and other local partners and provide linkages to our local healthcare partners and community-based organization as necessary as partnership health plans initiate and continue to expand the robust network that's necessary to provide quality healthcare to our Medi-Cal beneficiaries in UBA County. This is a new goal, so for 2023, I really want to focus on data-driven decision-making. So while I was at Johns Hopkins, I completed a fellowship in quality improvement, and I want to initiate a quality improvement program for Health and Human Services Department's managers focusing on data-driven decision-making, otherwise known as DDDM. So how DDDM can help manager more effectively manage in this new work landscape, hybrid work, moving away from a management by observation, but really focusing on the what, the how, the true deliverables of their work product? And this really allows for more engagement, collaboration, and really natural succession planning across the board. Community engagement is a key tenet of public health, and I continue to engage with the UBA County Office of Education, engage with our healthcare partners, including our three failure-qualified health centers, Aventus Health and Riteau is our only hospital, and Sutter North Medical Group. I continue to serve on the UBSUDD Medical Society as a board member, providing ad hoc updates to community partners and stakeholders as requested and as necessary based on the disease presenting at that time and throughout the community health improvement process, including the Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan, engaging with all facets of the UBA County community. So for 2023, this key tenet continues. So I will continue to work closely with the UBA County Office of Education as part of the opioid overdose task force. I will continue to work with Marysville Joint Unified School District, the UBA County Office of Education, and Peachtree Health on the Blazer Support Center currently located at Lynders High School. I will offer to present at each UBA County High School regarding what's the role of public health, my role as a public health officer, and my personal journey as a first-generation immigrant in becoming a physician. I will also continue to work with our healthcare partners, continue to provide monthly update to the UBSUDD Healthcare Council, continue my board membership on the UBSUDD Colusa Medical Society, and continue my involvement as the Peachtree Board Member. Active involvement through the community health improvement process. A couple of other new activities is I currently sit on the Blue Zones Steering Committee for Tobacco Policy and Programming, and I will be providing UBA County Public Health's unique perspective on engagement with regional and state public health partners as an executive committee member of the California Conference of Local Health Officers. Finally, in terms of summary of my 2023 health officer goals, these are to complete the Community Health Improvement Plan, continue to tackle the local sexually transmitted diseases epidemic, continue with my med-health lead role in disaster planning and response, assist local healthcare and community-based organization with the Medi-Cal model change to partnership health plan, train Health and Human Services Department managers on data-driven decision-making, and then continue the key tenet of robust community engagement. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from Board?
I have a quick question. I know you're back there. I'm glad to see you're working with the Blue Zones. I know they have a big push now on the tobacco reduction. How do you feel we're gaining as far as obesity and tobacco?
So we have a ways to go in both regards. I think what we have observed in terms of tobacco activities is that there's still a lot of education and outreach that is necessary. And also, one of our key focus within the Blue Zone Tobacco Steering Committee is engaging with every local entity and considering a ban on outdoor smoking in parks. So there are two tobacco collisions, one on the UBA County side and one on the Sutter County side, and I'm working closely with the Blue Zone sort of policy lead, his name is Eric Paredes, to try to relay that goal for the next year. And then in terms of obesity, that's a million-dollar question because there's multifactorial risk factors that really impact obesity. But one of our key health priorities that was selected within the Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Process, as you saw, is built community. And I think that's going to be really, really critical because it's not only about choosing the right food, but it's also moving freely and having the necessary and safe built community for our UBA County residents to feel comfortable just taking a walk.
Yeah, so all these are some of the main factors in the Blue Zone, you know, diet, exercise, interaction. Apparently, UBSUDD were rated like an F on the American Lung Association.
Yes.
So that's not good.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll move that needle. We'll try to get up to a D and gradually to that A, but it's going to take a gradual effort. But yeah, and then I was very happy to participate in the National Walking Day last Wednesday. The Blue Zone came by to the Health and Human Services Department, and I led more than 65 of our staff in walking around the department building.
Good, thank you very much.
Sure, through the Chair, Dr. Liu, thanks for this report and everything you've been doing and everything you have planned. So with respect to CAL-AIM and partnership, I know it's still a little early in 2023, and they still have a lot of the year left to go, but how's that going with respect to getting local providers on board and just anything in general you can share? Does it seem to be going well, and you anticipate things will be ready for a January 1 turnover? And it'll be positive for clients?
It's going to be a transition, as with all transitions, there's going to be some potential challenges. And I do want to clarify that CAL-AIM and a Medi-Cal model change are two separate. They are somewhat related, but still separate processing. So CAL-AIM is an initiative to do what we call enhanced care management and 14 various community support for certain population of focus, such as homeless clients, such as those who are fostered children soon as of July 1, 2023. So that is separate because it is actually currently already going on with Anthem and California Health and Wellness, and with the model change, it will continue on with partnership health plan. So all Medi-Cal managed care plans participate within CAL-AIM. In terms of the model change, essentially, we already started this, where we're engaging closely with both the state DHCS and partnership health plan to make sure that our Medi-Cal beneficiaries are understanding that the transition is going to happen, know what are the details, and wherever I can be that bridge and conduit with our healthcare providers, our community-based organization, making that introduction to the key partnership health plan staff, I'm doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Liu.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. The World Health Organization has come up with an idea with a policy of not vaccinating the younger children, K through 12. Is that something that we're getting away from in UBA County?
So we subscribe to the CDC, which obtains its recommendation from the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, and so whatever the ASIP Advisory Committee advises to the CDC, and then they formally adopt through Dr. Walensky as the CDC Director currently, that is what all public health state and local agency in the United States subscribe to in terms of vaccination schedule for adults and children.
Well, the amount of deaths from COVID are plotted at best. You know, you have comorbidity factors, and you have age groups that are... that primarily that's where the deaths occur, and children is not, you know, the K through 12 is not in that area. I'm just wondering why with the effects they're finding out now about the vaccine, why they don't stop that?
So those issues have been raised with the CDC and Advisory Committee Immunization Practices, and they affirm their scheduled recommendation for children and adult vaccination.
Okay. Basically, we follow the lemmings, and I'm just, you know, I don't have younger children, but I wouldn't allow them to be vaccinated, but in the mask situation that we're still carrying on with masks and medical facilities when they're... no?
As of April 3, 2023, the California Department of Public Health has removed that requirement for all healthcare facilities in California and all high-risk, non-healthcare congregate settings, so it is now a recommendation that is dependent on each organization to determine for themselves.
Okay. And the opioid overdose overdoses are... is fentanyl in there included in the totals?
Yes, sir, and it's a publicly available statewide dashboard, opioid overdose dashboard, and it's broken down by county. Please note that death data takes a long time to reconcile, so you'll see that most of the time the data is only up until early first quarter of 2022.
Okay. Now, we spend X number of dollars in tobacco education programs. Have we dedicated comparable funds to the fentanyl crisis that's happening now in the United States?
So funding ultimately comes from Congress and then is distributed to the various national agency that then distribute to the state, and then finally to us. I have seen a significant push in terms of addressing the fentanyl crisis, many opportunities there. We are not the lead for the UBA County Opioid Overdose Task Force, it's the UBA County Office of Education, but I have presented a very robust plan that's going to be discussed at our next task force meeting on April 17.
Okay. And as far as counterfeit pills with a fentanyl problem, are the schools getting involved in that? Because it's the younger kids that, you know, put them in a bowl, mix them up, and try one.
So I'm going to have to defer to our education partner leaders, but given the fact that the UBA County Office of Education is the lead for our UBA County Opioid Overdose Task Force, I'm pretty confident that our school districts are very involved.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So we all put together a presentation, and I look forward to reading the whole thing.
Yeah, I believe that you all should have gotten a paper copy of our 2022 Community Health Assessment. If you would like more, if your constituents want paper copies, please let us know. We'll be happy to drop them off wherever you need us to drop them off. Thank you for your time.
Any further comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? All right. Next, we'll receive a quarterly development update from Community Development and Services.
Hey, good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Rachel Downs, I am your Business Engagement Manager out of Community Development and Services Agency. I have the pleasure of presenting to you today, notably one of my favorite presentations of the quarter for all the different things that come to your Board, our Quarterly Development Update, kind of giving your Board, the public, businesses, and developers a great idea of what's happening in development throughout the county. This report covers items from our planning, building, public works, environmental health departments, the airport, and/or the library. To start us off, we're going to invite Jason Copping, our Airport Manager, to share with you what's on the horizon at the airport, and then I will return back up here to talk through the information from the other departments.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, other members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here and to be able to have a few minutes to just share with you. Let's see if I can summarize it succinctly on the fly. We're going to talk a little bit about the relationship the airport has with the federal government, our community projects, and then I want to touch briefly on a magic wand event and invite you guys to dream with us. So this should be a pretty fun and quick walk through the airport. So really quick, what you have in front of you here is what is called our summary sheet. It is what we share with the Federal Aviation Administration, known colloquially at general aviation airports as the FAA. They're involved in many facets, from technically ensuring that safety features are in place at the airport, but what I wanted to share with you briefly is the five-year roadmap of what projects we are in discussion with the federal government as a precursor to requesting and submitting grant applications to get grant funding. You'll notice a theme, and this is something that Kimberly and I have learned through our meetings over the last couple of years with the FAA, is that if it's not concrete or asphalt, the chances of it being funded are very low. You will however see an electrical project in there where we're looking at our ramp lighting and our rotating beacon and bringing them up to current standards, and that initially has very favorable response from the FAA. Moving on, I want to talk a little bit about keeping the community connected. And when I say "community," I mean all of UBA County, South County, Lynden, all of hers, Plumas Lake, Edgewater, all of it. Is, we're using a little trick many people know as food. We have brought food trucks to the UBA County Airport, and for some weird reason, that brings people together. It's also working to bring aviators together. To shamelessly steal some quotes that are out there in the world, I want to briefly Shanghai some of the words of Tony Hsieh, former CEO of ZAPNOS. He's known for having a management philosophy that is very different. He believed in maximizing serendipity, and what he meant by that was creating the opportunity for meaningful collisions in your community. And that is what we're actually seeing happen at the hangar food trucks and more at the UBA County Airport. We have more and more pilots arriving, flying in from afar. We have many more community members connecting and reconnecting. Some of the conversations we hear start off with, "I haven't seen you since we voted last," having seen each other at a polling location. Living in the same community and bringing them out of their homes and getting them connected is... Living in the same community and bringing them out of their homes and getting them connected is what's going to start creating some of those. Phenomenons that we hope to see all over Yuba County. The next topic, I told you we would talk about a project. I briefly want to touch on something that you have been kept apprised of. Through the course of getting the grant funding, conducting the project. And and I wanted to briefly once again talk about the taxiway on the west side of the airport that connects the east side of Skyway Drive. To the airport infrastructure, making it very attractive to more and more businesses. Didn't want to let you know that we have actually captured the attention of quite a few aviation-related business owners. They have either flown into or flown over Yuba County Airport and seen this new infrastructure, and it has resulted in phone calls. So that is a great thing because it it is things like this. That will bring not only growth and vitality at the Yuba County Airport, but also to the overall community by providing jobs at a living wage. Right here in our backyard. And let's, to keep it brief, given the time constraints, I also want to just talk briefly about. A subdivision that was started thirty-plus years ago at the entrance of the Yuba County Airport. As you drive in on the right-hand side of Sky Harbor Drive, you will notice. Four rather large executive-style hangars. They're a box, not a T. And. There are many other parcels contiguous with those that should also be developed. However. This is where waiting a magic wand and inviting you guys to dream with us a little bit. To actually fulfill the vision that started over thirty years ago with this subdivision. It's going to take some creative financing. It's going to take some funding partnerships, whether that's a private-public venture or what have you. But we do believe that in addressing what is seen from our Bogor Road at the entrance of the of the airport. And by providing that infrastructure that is lacking, the roadway, you can see the yellow outline of where the road should be. And bringing in the facilities from OPID will actually make the aviation-related parcels facing the taxiway infrastructure very attractive to businesses. Of an aviation nature, and then the eight plus or minus acres to the south of that will become usable and. Attractive to, let's say, other manufacturing or industrial developers in our region. That right now that acreage is there, but it is really not accessible because of the lack of the infrastructure. So dream with us for a little bit and you'll be hearing more from us as we go forward. To kind of really just summarize, this fiscal year, we paid off a loan that Kimberly and I, being relatively new to managing the airport. Inherited that was needed to complete an apron project about five or six years ago. We paid it off early, saving the airport off the top of my head thirty to forty thousand dollars in interest that we're not going to pay. For us, we're still measuring things in tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So projects like this where they're measured in the millions is still for us a bit of a dream. But we do see the light at the end of that tunnel where we're going to be able to position ourselves to actually start moving in those directions. With that, I believe it's appropriate for me to just. Take a beat and ask if there's any questions from the board.
Any questions from board?
I have a couple. You said concrete and asphalt. Have you have we looked into building a grass runway in?
I appreciate you bringing that up. There has been some recent FAA regulation changes. They just released a circular within the last eighteen months, talking about having parallel sod strips or grass strips next to a main runway. And yes, we are looking into it. We do think that would be a feature that would be very attractive to the aviation community at the Yuba County Airport. We have the space for it, and with this new regulatory change from the FAA, we do believe we can get there.
Then my other question is, have you guys looked into a separate helicopter parking like they have in Lincoln?
Not at this time. The demand for it hasn't been great. There was recently somebody who approached us about wanting to do a helicopter training facility. It would take something like that that would kind of trigger us and push us into doing something like that. However, there are parts of the leadership team at the airport that do believe that if you build it, they will come. So with that that guidance, we could actually continue those discussions with the FAA and potentially get that added to our our roadmap of projects.
That's it.
Any further questions? Any questions from the public? We'll go out there. Okay. Great presentation. It's a little abbreviated in comparison to what's actually happening out there, but like you said.
I believe in leaving your audience wanting more, so I will be back. Thank you.
One thing to commend is the comments about building community. I think those are well taken.
Okay, thank you again, Jason. It's a great update from the airport. So speaking of roads and infrastructure, our Public Works Department has been working diligently in Oliver's to complete the McGowan Parkway. curb gutters sidewalks project between Highway sixty-five and Highway seventy near Lindhurst High School. In Linda, the community drainage project installing a large storm drain underneath Feather River Boulevard down Northfield Road. To the Lindhurst Avenue intersection is well underway. Sam did confirm that they would estimate fifty to sixty percent completion and estimated completion date about June. So that's the project that runs underneath the highway and then right up in front of the Feather River Center. Additionally, in West Linda, Feather River Boulevard, Cedar Lane and Alicia Avenue can expect construction. To begin installing curb gutters, sidewalks and drainage within the next few months. As a first phase of a much larger project, I know your board is well aware of really revitalizing West Linda through infrastructure. I'm so excited to see that project kick off there. Looking ahead, as you can see on this slide, I tried to not make the font too small, but it's great because there's certainly. A number of additional infrastructure projects that are listed here both under in design. As well as future priority projects. The reason that we broke this out in this way is as we've continued to do this development report. And share this information not only with your board, but again, businesses and developers. These two sections we find are really valuable to them so they can start planning ahead in their five- and ten-year goals and. Trajectories so they know where the future infrastructure is happening in our community. And one of the biggest causes for celebration in our entire department, specifically in Public Works recently. Has been the notification from the California Natural Resources Agency. That they announced that they plan to award Yuba County three point five million dollars in improvements for Friendship Park in West Linda. Those that have been following this project know that this has been a true labor of love, a creative opportunity and something we're all very excited about. The three point five million dollars will cover items like new shade pavilions, barbecues, biking and walking paths. Multi-use turf for recreation, as well as things like decorative fencing to beautify the area. As you can see in the image that I provided, that's not all. We continue to seek additional grant funding to rehabilitate this twenty-two acres. The full redevelopment concept includes additional things like interpretive. Panels to acknowledge the community garden and the Asian culture that's there. As well as artwork throughout the park, additional play equipment and things of that nature. So we're continuing to seek additional funding on top of the three point five million that is intended to be awarded by the California Natural Resources Agency. Okay, through our planning department, we have received a number of use permit applications, including. Excuse me, new personal storage facility directly across the street from Yuba College. You can see that drafted site plan here. On the right-hand side of the image, you can see the personal storage facility. And then the developer intends to implement this in a phased approach. And then on the left-hand side, potentially expanding additional personal storage or future opportunities for an apartment development as well. And. Fernwood Park, plus an additional application has been received for eighty-nine residential lots between Fernwood Drive and Grove Avenue. This project is a partnership between Yuba County and Habitat for Humanity, creating a variety of affordable housing options. The site is currently a large, underutilized field, kind of notorious for mud bogging and vagrant foot traffic. And the development would also reconstruct the Fernwood, the existing Fernwood Park. Improving park access and play equipment for the local community. And additionally, this quarter, a number of projects have been received. And formally approved through either the Development Review Committee, Planning Commission, or your board. The first is an application to split an ag industrial property off Feather River Boulevard. This site is commonly known for the Namus Food Packing Operations. Which was recently purchased by a developer out of Texas named Bridge Cap Partners. They are a national cold storage facility developer. They intend to maintain the existing shipping and cold storage operations that you see on the left-hand side of the image. The existing buildings, plus develop one to two hundred thousand additional square feet of cold storage. Their primary end user is a company called Valley Vision, sorry, Valley Fine Foods. And we all know Valley Vision and we love them, but their office spaces are in Sacramento. I apologize. Valley Fine Foods is one of the largest cold storage food suppliers for Costco. Which they would potentially put on the right-hand side of that parcel. And Griffith Ranch subdivision officially received its approval through our planning commission. And then Riverside Meadows, there was one map that was finally, excuse me, one final map that was recorded this quarter called Riverside. Meadows Village Number Four from Legacy Homes, which would be located in South Plumas Lake, just across, just off Simran Drive. And this would include ninety single-family homes. Okay, that's from planning. No, that was a lot, but it's exciting to see all the things happening in development that are on the horizon. So as far as things that are actually happening now in building. We have. Excuse me, I missed a portion. So yeah, from our building department, we have received a relatively consistent pace of development. Total building permits issued this quarter are on par with the same time period for previous years. You can see that on the left-hand section of the slide. Plus ninety-two production homes were given final occupancy this past quarter, which is relatively comparable to. The same period of time in the years past as well. Okay, so as far as commercial building permits, we have provided a list here of building permits that are either currently under review. Recently issued or permits that were recently finalized. A couple notable ones here I want to call out is a new barber shop next to the Cloverleaf Market. As well as Harmony Health is expanding to a new location in Wheatland. And lastly, there will be a new market on Rice's Crossing, featuring local produce and freshly baked pastries as well. And we would be remiss not to mention the continued development at the Costco site. Anybody that drives by recently, thank you for the break in the rain, Mother Nature. They are continuing to do dirt work and making some solid progress there. They do still anticipate opening this fall, as well as Galoli Real Estate is actively marketing the additional pads for development around the site. Furthermore, we continue to see a renewed interest in the area with the demolition of the Peachtree Restaurant, creating a blank slate for future development. As well as tentative site plans that have been submitted to our Community Development Department for additional commercial properties. That are nearby, featuring things like food and beverage retail up and down that corridor. And I just have two more items that I want to bring before your board and share an update with you on. These are two additional new business programs that we created and launched this quarter. So first was Food Incubator, otherwise known as Food Inc. This was really a partnership between the Sacramento Valley SBDC, Yuba College, and our guest Yuba team. It was a four-week in-person culinary boot camp, helping local bakers, taters. And packaged food companies really learning how to cost out their recipes and launching them into new markets. Some local examples I want to provide you are Christie with Lomarica Sour Dough, started a sourdough bread company out of her house during COVID. She was only able to, before this program, bake about three loaves of bread at a time. And her orders have just been growing and growing and exceeding her ability to keep up with that. After she was able to go through this four-week program, not only learn how to cost out her bread and make sure that she's making a profit margin. On everything that she's making. She then was also able to be better prepared to purchase a twelve loaf oven bakery that she can put. In her home and continue to expand there. So just a great local story. If you share in for one of our bakers in Lomarica, as well as Emily from Emmy's Bake House, has been the longstanding dessert chef at the Silver Dollar. She truly makes some of the most amazing lemon cheesecake bites. If you Supervisor Blazer, I believe you joined me at that event. They were fantastic. But by the end of the program, she was able to get her permits aligned and then secure a full-time kitchen. In in our area so that she's able to continue to expand her menu. And she has future plans for a beautiful storefront bakery likely in downtown Marysville. Just two examples of how that program really impacted two small local businesses. And lastly, we have yes to government contracting. This was a great partnership, again, between the Sacramento Valley SBDC, Yuba Water Agency sponsored the program. Our team, as well as Beal Air Force Base Nine Cons, the contracting squadron at Beal Air Force Base. We all know that Beal and the federal government spend millions of dollars annually at this installation. And so we want to help them secure those contracts as much as we can with local businesses. So in partnership again with Beal, the water agency and many more, we hosted collectively a lunch and learn. On how and why you would want to do business with the federal government. Then Beal Air Force Base specifically identified contracts that they were looking to fill within the next twelve to twenty-four months. And they were able to connect with local contractors that service those needs and help build those relationships. So just again, trying to keep those dollars as local as we can within Yuba County and capitalizing on the economic impact of that installation. That concludes the presentation. As always, I really want to thank our entire community development team and staff throughout the entire county. That these projects represent, because together we truly are making Yuba County the place to do business. So thank you, and I will gladly take your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions from the board? Steven?
Just to comment, these reports are usually my highlights for the year. So this is a great program. It's a new program. This is only what, your fifth quarter that you've reported on?
I believe so, fourth or fifth.
Yeah. And it's an example that I think other jurisdictions are going to probably follow. So thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Blazer.
I was just curious about timelines on some things. McGowan, do we know when that's going to finish possibly?
Sam, can I defer to you on that one?
And then Mario's Pharmacy, do we know when that will possibly open?
I don't know. While Sam's walking up, I don't know when Mario's Pharmacy intends to open, but I do believe that in the report, it called out that he was given his final occupancy permit. So I can certainly give him a call and find that information.
From our end of it, it's all done then. So it's only on, we've done everything on our side of it.
As far as, yes, as far as our departments are concerned, he is ready to go.
Perfect. And then on the two point five million for Friendship Park, that's fantastic. When did that news come in?
So three point five.
Three point five.
And we've got to get the extra million in there. And I believe just within the last two weeks.
Awesome. Fantastic.
Okay, and timeline for McGowan.
Good morning to the board. Sam Button, Assistant Director of Public Works. So on McGowan, I know the weather has extremely delayed things. That was definitely unprecedented with some of the century-type storms that we had. Let me follow up with our engineer that's managing that project and get back to you if that's okay. I don't know an exact date. I don't want to overpromise anything. And then on Friendship Park, yeah, great news. We just found out they were, we were a little delayed on the response since they wanted to announce it first, the agency that gave it to us. But Dan is also preparing a grant for Clean California to, I guess, subsidize the extra, I think, two million dollars it was for the remaining items that we want to put in the park. So just adds up on that.
And what kind of timeline are we looking at for when that will either shovel hit ground or be finished for the park?
So it's definitely a good-sized project. I believe it's twenty-two acres. So it's a, it's definitely a big undertaking. I don't know what timeline Dan had promised us to. Typically, it's about two or three years for design and then construction would probably be a season or two. So I would say it's probably in the four to five-year mark before we'd be able to use it. But once again, I'll follow up with our commitments on that and send you a timeline.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments?
Through the chair, yeah. Not a, not a question, just a quick comment. Thank you to you in Community Development. As Supervisor Blazer said, this presentation is always a highlight, I think, both for the board as well as for the community. And it's great to see all the exciting stuff that's going on and it continues to go on and we just add more every time. So it's great. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you also for this report. It's very beneficial when you're talking to people about what's happening. Very beneficial when you're talking to people about what's happening in Yuba County. Everybody goes, nothing's happening in Yuba County and this uh, kind of puts it to bed. But uh, uh, I know on the radio it works real good. It is concise, but uh, thank you again for a great presentation. I understand that across the river, they're looking to do something similar to what you're doing, so. All right, any questions from the public? All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
All right, I think we're at public communications now.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes. And each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to street card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have two cards.
Okay, first?
First one we have is Tony Farley.
Hey, Tony.
See, works, there you go. Yeah, I'm twenty-five from Southern, Southern City, South Shore County. Here, thank everybody for your service. Thank the sheriff, the sheriff. Rachel, lawyers, Dr. Lou. Thank the board. Thank you for your service. Hope to bring new business here, bring major business. Thank you.
All right. Second card we have is Tom McQuarter.
Hello, Tom.
Good morning, board. Good morning. Uh, my name's Tom McQuarter. Is this microphone working?
Yes.
No, no feedback. Okay. So you guys all know I live in Olivehurst and uh, so I'm here to compliment you on your. Uh, typical slow as molasses action. Um, Donovan brought up a good point, uh, blue zone goal. Apparently it's very hard to comply without sidewalks in Olivehurst, so. Um, I'm going to ask for a meeting with Mr. Mike Lee, the CDSA director. To correct the misunderstanding. Apparently, Public Works thinks that a two-year engineering effort. Coupled with a three-to-five-year construction project is what it will take to clean out open slash exposed drain ditches in Olivehurst. Clean, not construct. There is a huge unmistakable difference between routine maintenance and building the Taj Mahal of drainage systems. Public Works apparently is only interested in telling the county residents that the ditches are their responsibility to maintain. In an ill-advised exercise, Public Works' time and money was spent to count driveways. That cross over the drain ditches. The residents again were told that the pipes have to be of a certain size. No resident appreciates Public Works trying to excuse their lack of willingness to do their main function. Which is to maintain county infrastructure. So clean out the drain ditches, start putting more effort into maintaining what we have. This is an everyday job, not something to do when we get a grant. Thank you. And I do would like to ask you to please uh, revisit the Brown Act so that. Public members can utilize the very much more impactful screens that we bought and maintained. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next we go into county departments, county administrator. Oops. We have another card? Well. Wait till you get the mic and then uh, we can all hear you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to fill out a card. It's not like I didn't know it. Um, my name's Don Schrader. I live at seven oh one Ellis Road in District Ten. I'm here to address the board today on the Museum of the Forgotten Warriors. About a little over a year ago, your board approved the. Splitting the lot where the museum currently sits on from the twenty acres that uh, we, we. We have, we were on the twenty acres of property. Uh, we were in, within a week or so of that, of that happening. When the property owner decided that they wanted to maintain the entire twenty acres and. The only way that we could obtain the, the museum is to buy the twenty acres. Uh, we've worked with uh, several groups since then, attempting to come up with a financing plan or. A plan to uh, to continue where we're at. Because we don't have a, a funding stream, it's going to be very difficult for the board of super, board of directors. To come up with the amount of money that people want for that property. Uh, there've been suggestions that we move the library, we move the museum into, into Marysville. One of the suggestions is we move to the Packard Library. I didn't, I just. I can't, can't even conceive of what that would look like when all the equipment's sitting around in front of the Packard Library and. And it's just, it, it, I think it'd be almost impossible to do. You can move anything given enough money. So that's where we're at right now. Uh, the future of the museum is somewhat in question. Uh, we're, we're going to try to. I hope that, that the museum exists for years and years in the future. It's, it's a tremendous asset to the county. And I think it's something that would be. A horrible loss if the county were to lose it. So I'll keep you informed and let you know what happens.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Kevin? All right, received presentation from Sutter Buttes Regional Land Trust regarding use of Yuba County Government Center.
Yes, uh, good morning, Chair, members of the board, Kevin Allen, County Administrator. Uh, so the item before you today, we were approached um, by Sutter Buttes Regional Land Trust, uh, we meaning uh, the County Administrator's Office, the clerk of the board. Uh, to, to um, seek permission um, to use the board chambers and, and government center. Uh, to host the twenty twenty-three Swan Festival, which would begin on Friday, November tenth and then conclude on Sunday. Uh, November twelfth. The, the costs are pretty nominal. It'd be uh, some additional security costs, a little. Building, buildings and grounds cost to, you know, make sure the bathrooms are clean, et cetera. Uh, so we, we were supportive, we, the clerk of the board's office, uh, administrative services in my office were supportive of the request. Um, but we thought it would be a good idea to inform the board of um, that the Swan Festival that's, that's upcoming here and, and um. Give uh, Sutter Buttes uh, Land Trust an opportunity uh, to have an audience at the board because it's, it is an important festival. Uh, you know, it brings in a lot of visitors from outside of um, Yuba and Sutter Counties, uh, kind of highlights. Uh, you, you know, some of the great assets that we have here, um, natural assets here in, in, in our community. Uh, so uh, Lisa Lindman, um, with the Regional Land Trust is, is here this morning. I'd like to say a few words.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Melissa. Good morning, uh, Chair and members of the board and public. Um, let me just get my presentation up and running. Um, so yeah, as Kevin uh, gave you the, the outline and did the board receive my actual request too? I forgot to ask about that. Okay, so yeah, there's a, a written request with a lot of details in there for you all, um, about what we're looking to do here and, and trying to achieve. Um, I know I've been up in front of you a few times here about the re, resource conservation district and I have not talked to you about the land trust work that I do. Um, so I thought this was a good opportunity to introduce you to the land trust and the conservation work that I'm doing with them. Um, so I am their acting executive director and lands manager. So I basically do everything um, for the land trust. Uh, so our mission is to protect and maintain the natural and agricultural, agricultural resources of the Sutter Buttes and surrounding region for present and future generations. Uh, the organization was formed in nineteen eighty-nine and has a, a longstanding history in this community. And we are a five oh one C three nonprofit, uh, currently have six conservation easements, two fee-owned properties and a total of. Um, just over two thousand acres conserved and a professional staff of two, including myself. Uh, the history of the organization, most uh, folks in the community actually know us as Middle Mountain Foundation. Which really started as a hiking group in the Sutter Buttes, um, allowing public access into the Buttes by um, creating some agreements with the landowners out there. To provide that access. And um, in the early two thousands, we started seeing a lot of increase in development pressure, a lot more. Folks coming to us looking to protect their land from future development. And um, and seeing that development coming up here made us question our goals and objectives of the organization and, and that we had our roots. In conservation but had not been actively pursuing that. Um, so at that time, the land trust decided to become um, an accredited land trust and be nationally recognized. And once we did that, that um, prompted us to actually split the organization into two organizations, Middle Mountain Interpretive Hikes. Who still conducts the hikes in the Sutter Buttes and then Sutter Buttes Regional Land Trust. So now we are two separate nonprofits. But we do refer to ourselves as sister organizations and we do support each other and participate in various activities together. Um, and then in twenty fifteen, we were recognized as an accredited land trust. Um, so as an accredited land trust, it is a, um, a national process or a national organization, the Land Trust Alliance and uh. And the process is a rigorous review process similar to what like an IRS audit would be. Um, they look at all of our internal documentations and procedures and policies as well as our financials. And this is just to make sure that our commitment to conservation is into perpetuity. These agreements that we put into place, these easements, they are forever agreements that stick to the deed and we have to as an organization make sure that we are. Um, able to create a sustainable organization that is um, able to accomplish preservation of those properties into perpetuity. Um, so this accreditation program really helped us become that, a more sustainable organization, more responsible. And also just really reinvigorated our commitment to conservation. Um, so what is a land trust? So we're a charitable organization, as I mentioned, and we acquire land through a conservation easement process. Um, that we engage with voluntary landowners typically, but um, not always. Sometimes it is a requirement for. Um, a county or, or um, other local requirements that have you set aside the land for an easement. Um, as well as mitigation purposes for development. Um, and we use these conservation easements to legally, as a legally binding document to restrict, restrict the land use and permanently protect the land. And then we also provide education through outreach events and connect the local community to the land in various ways. And uh, so a conservation easement is voluntary, um, per, perpetual, it does last forever and is attached to the deed. So whether the, when the landowner sells the property, whether it's to a family member or somebody else, that new landowner is, is now responsible for that easement. And uh, abiding by the restrictions. Um, it does tend to limit development and subdivision. That is the main uh, goal of an easement. Um, is to try to remove that development and keep the land as working land, as agricultural lands or as open space or habitat. Um, and then the landowner does retain the title and management control. The land trust is really just an active partner in conservation and making sure that the land stays open. And the landowner does receive some financial benefits in that they are paid for um, selling the development rights to the property. So there is um, a lot, a, a large sum of money that the landowner can, can. Gain from these, putting an easement in place and they can put that back into their property or they can do whatever they want with it. It's their money. Um, so what does a conservation easement do? It does keep the land um, open. It keeps working land working. Um, and limits development, um, protects wildlife habitat and corridors. Um, as well as sensitive and endangered species. Um, we also have a lot of cultural and historical resources on some of our properties. Um, and conservation of riparian areas, floodplain services, wetlands, um, as well as um, some properties may provide recreational or educational values. And how does the community benefit? Um, so the cost of public services are reduced by containing that sprawl and hopefully um, uh. Encouraging infill development by placing these conservation easements in areas that are currently in agriculture or open um, space. And uh, and local agricultural remains viable and protecting our food supply, water and soil resources. Um, conservation of habitat and wildlife corridors as well as core habitat areas. Um, protection of open space, scenic vistas. We obviously live in a very rural community and it's really um, awesome to be able to. Go out into our community and really you can see the buttes, you can see the farmland um, for, in some cases as far as the eye can see. And that is really an amazing feeling to, to have this rural community um, feel in our, in our area. Um, and then there's carbon sequestration is also um, another benefit. As well as the public access and recreational opportunities, um, which are up to each individual landowner in some cases. Um, and so I mentioned, we um, the land trust, when we um, enter into these agreements with our landowners, we become a forever conservation partner. And work with each landowner and on an annual basis to monitor the conservation values of, of the property, make sure that it's not being developed. We connect with our landowners annually um, during monitoring to answer any questions, connect them to resources. Um, help them with management um, issues that they might be having. Um, and potential, getting them to potential funding sources that might address management needs. Uh, so our current projects, I'm really excited about um, the growth that the organization has seen since becoming an accredited land trust in twenty fifteen. Um, we have just under thirty million dollars in awards from Department of Conservation. Natural Resource Conservation Services and more recently, the United States Air Force. Uh, we just recently closed on the Dana Farms, that's eight hundred and seventy-five acres in South Yuba County. Um, with the Dana family and we're really excited about that because we also closed on the Bear River Project, which is the Three Rivers Levy Improvement Authority. Mitigation project um, and restoration project that was completed. Uh, we are the easement holders, Sack Valley Conservancy is our management partner. Um, they will be doing the management on that property. And that one um, is protecting floodplain habitat, um, as well as uh, riparian habitat. And uh, so we're really excited about closing those in the last six months and adding to our conservation um, project list. Um, but we're also really excited about the work we're doing with Magnolia Ranch. We just received full funding um, for that project from Department of Conservation and the United States Air Force. And that project is located in um, the southwest corner near Beal um, Air Force Base. And um, we're looking to work with the base. Um, on this map, you can see uh, Magnolia is that orange. Uh, odd-shaped piece that is on that southwest corner of Beal. And we're, we're currently working with Trust for Public Land and hopefully Bear Yuba Land Trust to. Actually do a larger conservation effort around the base to protect the base from encroachment. And uh, so we're really excited about building this partnership with Beal and making sure that Beal is a, a viable. Um, entity for our community and that they don't have any um, restrictions on what missions they can accept in the future and, and currently. Um, so we're, yeah, we're really excited about that. And then you can see the Dana Farms easement and the Bear River easement in that south tip there in the orange. And then this uh, project, uh, the conservation map also shows you these pink areas are the developed areas. And you can see how the, how Sacramento is kind of moving up towards us there in the, in the bottom part of the map. Um, and up ninety-nine and seventy, um, kind of starting to change our rural area really and, and seeing a lot more development. Um, which isn't a bad thing, but um, when it comes to conservation, it's really about balance and. Um, creating a system that works for everybody. Um, so you can see there's a lot of agriculture in our community. Our community as well as our nation's dependent on that agriculture and the food supply it provides. And then in the yellow, it's a cream color and a dark yellow. Um, those are habitat. Core habitat areas in the dark yellow and the cream color is um, core habitat uh, corridors. And so we want to protect that um, the ability for our wildlife to migrate through the, through the land and. Be able to protect any core habitat areas for special status species. Um, so there's a lot. That goes into how we, how we pick and choose some of our conservation easements and where we want to do work. Um, and also another aspect of that is the dark green areas, which this may not be up to date. Um, those are currently protected areas and that's another. Um, goal that we try to connect with already protected areas to establish a, a larger contiguous area of protected habitat. So as uh, Kevin mentioned, we um, are looking to uh, be. So as uh Kevin mentioned, we um are looking to uh become the new lead for California Swan Festival. And we're really excited about um being able to bring this festival back to our region, but especially back to Yuba County and and hoping to have it here at the Government Center. And I know this is a bit of a new request and I really appreciate um staff, uh Kevin and Rachel, working with me to help vet this and figure out, is this gonna work or not? Um, and so there's some detailed information in in the request just about uh mess and and we wanted to make sure that any messes we have here would be um either controlled or try to eliminate them all, uh uh you know, and because we do have some live animal presentations. Um, so I'm gonna do my best to make sure that we, you know, do everything on the tile. Um, we're not gonna have any animal mess in here. Um, and uh and kids crafts are actually gonna be um offsite at another location. So this is really gonna be a hub for a gathering place for people to come um that are part of local organizations doing conservation um type work. Um, and also for people to come and do tours of our region to see the wildlife. Um, so that's kind of what I'm envisioning for the the Government Center here. And uh so you could see the the festival hub zone, we're hoping will be at the Government Center and then we'll have a kid's zone at the Sutter County Museum. And uh and we will be the the coordinator. Um, and just a little history too. So this uh this festival was hosted by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. And uh since then, they have passed the baton to us and we are leading the charge here um and and excited about that and also working with Sutter County Museum, working closely with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, I do have a staff member on my committee. Um, and then also staff our marketing group. So we have a nice uh team of folks here to help us make this uh festival a success. Um, and then what is the festival? It is uh for the most part, it is gonna be guided tours for birding and wildlife viewing, but we're also going to have space here in the Government Center for presenters, vendors, live animal presentations, workshops, and then at the museum, the kids' activities. Um, but we're really looking to highlight not only wa- waterfall and wildlife, um potential opportunities for viewing wildlife, uh but also increase awareness for conservation efforts, bring our conservation partners together so that they can see what each other is doing, but also um bring the public in front of these entities that are doing that work so that they can gain additional support for that work or just um higher level of awareness for what's happening. Uh, mission and goals of the festival are to provide equitable access and outdoor recreation opportunities, provide education on local conservation efforts and natural resources, uh showcase important wildlife and habitat areas in our tri-county region, create greater awareness for conservation of natural resources, promote and support wildlife tourism and agritourism, build conservation partnerships and showcase connections between natural working lands and wildlife. Um, I will say a lot of the easements um that we put in place, um we have a lot of working lands and and there's a a real interesting connection between working lands and wildlife and that these working lands can support wildlife and we see that with our rice fields. Um, but also in other other ways that landowners are implementing management on their property. And so we really want to highlight um all those things as well as um what our partners are doing. Uh, so public benefits of the festival, the admission to the festival will be free. The tours um will cost uh per person. Um, and the um admission to the Government Center, the festival hub will include access to vendors, activities, uh presenters and live animal de- demonstrations. Um, and then we would like to provide equi- equitable access, including opportunities for outdoor education and connecting to the land and to create a greater understanding and appreciation for our natural resources. Um, and also just promoting and supporting wildlife tourism and agritourism. We definitely live in in an area that um is rich with both those things. And so I think it's, this is a wonderful opportunity to help support um those things and also providing public education and outreach for conservation, wildlife and natural resource management and um providing opportunities uh for additional wildlife conservation. And that is it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for the board?
I have not a question, but I'm a big fan of the uh Swan Festival. Is this the third?
That's a good question. I think it's the sixth. There was a few years here and there where, yeah, they didn't have it. So I think it's actually the sixth. I believe it was started in twenty thirteen.
Oh, okay. Um, I know it used to be that they tried doing it at Caltrans
Yes.
in the past. This would be a much better venue um once you work out the details. And um I they did most of the promotion, I think, through social media before because we saw a lot of people from out of town. It seemed like a high percentage came in from like the Bay Area uh and those type of groups. Um, and there were like thirty maybe different tours that were all very interesting. I never got to go to any of them, but um, yeah, it's it's a really good uh good program. Um, so if you could figure out a way to uh interact with the local businesses, particularly restaurants, et cetera. Uh, if there was an information booth for them, I think that would be good.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And I'm, yeah, definitely trying to pull in a lot of different partners here, working with the libraries um and working with the the local historic commission. Um, so trying to pull in different aspects of the community that's maybe loosely even tied to natural resources, but I think, yeah, it's a great opportunity for the community in general to come together. And you have a good, a good memory. It was about thirty tours um in the past in twenty nineteen when the chamber held the event in Sutter County, they had about two hundred and fifty people. So um and we hope to grow that and create a Friday night evening um reception where we have a conservation award, maybe something like that and a dinner. Um, and you know, continue to kind of build on this event, but I think because it's our first year, um I really wanted to just focus on the tours and just getting the events set up and figuring out where the hub was gonna be, all that good stuff.
I've been on a few uh Buttes hikes and I'm glad that uh Middle Mountain is keeping that going.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Very important.
Any further comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Have you thought about instead of Sutter Museum, the Museum of Forgotten Warrior, you just says, it's got a corral out there. It's in the middle of rice fields and you want to talk about uh being out in the land that's, I don't know if you've ever been there or not, but uh you're surrounded by by farmland and and uh if you wanna
Yeah, if you have some contacts, I'd love to reach out, yeah.
He just left.
Yeah.
He's right there, right there.
Oh, he was right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just uh, I mean, it's 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 a, it's a place where there there's a lot of uh space for people to go to and to see different things. You could set up uh uh animals in the in the corral and 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 give tours of the rice fields if you want. And uh the museum's a much more interesting place than Sutter County Museum, so I just
Right.
Any questions from the public over here? Okay. All right.
Do we need a motion to?
It it was really a a non-action item unless the board had an objection to hosting it here, you know.
Well, she she answered my question about the animals and uh, you know, this uh this is not the service for that, but uh
We definitely do not want to leave a mess for staff.
But I I'm, I, you know, I I would, I would talk to Don Trader out there because you want to talk about someplace that's interesting. Uh, you know, the Museum of Forgotten Warriors, uh better than anything I've ever seen, actually including South in LA, you know, they don't have very many uh place for that much.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion. Thank you, Board.
Okay, thank you very much, Melissa. Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health received an approved annual update for the Mental Health Services. Oh.
Okay, good morning, Board. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is uh Rick Bingham. I am the Assistant Director for Sutter County Health and Human Services and the Director for Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health. And I'm here today to present the annual update for uh MHSA. I'm here with uh Betsy Gallin, who's our Adult Services Branch Director and our MHSA Coordinator. Uh, so sorry, I'm not quite sure how to advance the slides here. Guess I can just do that. Thank you. So the Mental Health Services Act was approved by California voters in two thousand and four, and as you know, this was uh a one percent income tax on um personal income in excess of one million dollars per year. And this was designed to expand and transform California's public behavioral health system. And uh in order to uh expend the funds, uh there is a community program planning process that we need to go through. So the MHSA uh specifically addresses certain populations and the funding is within certain component. So you can see there the, the, sorry, forgetting to do that. Um, you can see there the um populations that we um are targeting there. So uh you have children and youth, transitional age youth, adults and then older adults. And then the funding needs to be spent in um in certain categories. So uh y- you can see that we have three different categories, the largest being Community Services and Supports at seventy-six percent, and then PEI and Innovations. Originally, when the act was passed, there were five categories. Um, the two other ones were Workforce Education um and Training and then Capital Facilities and IT. Um, and so currently, if we want to fund any programs in those two categories, that comes out of the CSNS um category.
Can I ask one question? I'm concerned. What is transitional youth?
Transitional age youth. So that is uh youth that are going um from basically youth to adulthood. So it's ages sixteen to twenty-five and it helps them transition from the those age groups.
Means different things at different times.
Okay, and so the planning and review process for MHSA goes through um these steps that are on your uh slide here. So um we develop a draft through the Community Program Planning Process. A draft is circulated during a thirty-day public comment period. Uh, the local Mental Health Board then holds a hearing on the draft and provides input. Um, and then the county adopts the plan and updates it based on community feedback and comments. And then, this is why we're here today, the County Board of Supervisors approves the final plan and update. And we will be meeting with the Sutter County Board of Supervisors this afternoon for the same reason. So under Community Services and Supports, um the reason for that funding is to provide services to those most severely impacted by uh mental health issues. And then within CSNS, uh there are programs that are called Full Service Partnerships or FSP. And those uh include a whate- whatever it takes uh commitment towards progress on um individuals' behavioral health goals. And typically speaking, they're the individuals that have the highest um level of need. And these could be youth programs or adult programs. So for all of our S- FSP programs, um your graph there shows that um fifty percent of our clients uh reside in Yuba County and fifty percent reside in Sutter County. So it's almost an identical split there, fifty-fifty between the two counties. And we see that split in all areas of behavioral health with the exception of two areas, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. This next slide here uh talks about some of the outcomes that we see in our youth programs. I wanna um just note that this particular slide is not just for MHSA programs. So these are for all of our youth programs, MHSA or not. Um, we're unable to um make the data so that it only shows the MHSA programs. But you can see some of the uh increases in functioning there and the decreases in risk. So you see suicide risk, for example, decreased by nine percent. Um, uh annual control decreased by thirteen percent. So, and these are just a few. There were, there's twenty-seven items on the cans, which is an outcome measure that we use. And we saw improvement in uh twenty-six out of those twenty-seven items. The next slide here uh shows some adult FSP outcomes. Um, and so again, uh you can see some of the uh improvements that clients experience as a result of their their treatment through the FSP program. So the the graph on the left shows that the year prior to receiving FSP services that um the adult clients that ended up enrolling in services, uh thirty-one percent of them had mental health emergency. After the first year of FSP treatment, that was reduced to five percent. Um, I'm sure you're all familiar with the HART program. So this is a CSNS-funded uh program that we do through our MHSA uh programming. Um, as you know, the HART team engages and outreaches to uh hard-to-engage populations that are homeless. Um, and it consists of, from behavioral health, an intervention counselor, peer mentor, an outreach worker. And then, of course, we partner with law enforcement, code enforcement officers, as well as the ride-out street nursing team to engage these individuals. So this is one of the exceptions where we don't see the fifty-fifty split. Uh, so as you can see here, um, the total number of individuals that were engaged um in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, there are two hundred and forty-one, sixty-five percent of them were Yuba County uh residents. And then, for those who are chronically homeless, within that two hundred and forty-one, uh sixty-eight percent were residents of of uh Yuba County. Um, and we define chronically homeless as uh twelve months or more being homeless uh with a disabling condition over a three-year period. So the previous uh slides we're talking about are CSNS programs. The next few slides are gonna talk about our prevention and early intervention programs. So this is kind of outreach that we do. It's education and it is um ways to inform the community and to help the community understand um uh mental health issues that may be occurring. So this is a a program that we provide called Signs of Suicide. And this is done in middle school and high school settings. And uh again, you can see there uh some of the outcomes. I just like to, you know, highlight one of those under the youth. I can identify one or more signs that someone might be having thoughts of suicide. And we see um the the great outcome with that there. Next one is uh mental health first aid training and also youth mental health first aid training. So just like anyone in the community can take first aid training, um and that individual after that first aid training can help someone who's in a medical emergency. Uh, mental health first aid training does the same for individuals who are having a mental health emergency. And so since twenty sixteen, we've trained over nineteen hundred individuals uh in the community. Uh, and that's both in English and Spanish, and that's for adult and youth uh mental health first aid training. And uh these, these uh uh letters are kind of small here, but uh one of the things that I'd highlight there on the bottom right is, you know, I'm uh more likely to talk to a friend or family member if they thought they were experiencing emotional distress or seek support from a professional. Uh, this next slide is um actually a grant that we received. So this isn't specifically MHSA uh funding, um but it does come from the um uh Oversight and Accountability Commission, which is the state organizing body for MHSA. So this is called uh the MHSSA Grant, Mental Health Student Services Act Grant. And so this is a grant that uh we received and we worked directly with uh Yuba County Office of Education and Sutter County Superintendent of Schools um to provide what's called a mobile access hub. And so we contracted with uh Yuba County Office of Education, so our funding basically goes to them. They then subcontracted with Victor Community Supports and they provide therapists um in a mobile model. So essentially, they travel to all the schools in Yuba County and Sutter County to um provide assessment, to provide um additional support. They provide um groups, education, et cetera. And uh they're currently serving eighty-three students in the Bye County uh area. Uh, another program that we have through our um prevention and uh early intervention funding is the PREP program. Uh, so again, this is with the Yuba County Office of Ed and Sutter County Superintendent of Schools. Uh, we have staff that are embedded in schools um throughout uh both counties. Um, and each county decides how they want to do this. So essentially, we provide funding and then um Office of Education, Yuba County, decides what their pro- program's gonna look like. And Sutter County um decides how their program will look. So we can't, you know, it's not apples and oranges about uh what is provided on each side of the river. But in Yuba County, um that funding goes toward But in Uba County, that funding goes towards a full-time prevention student support and health counselor and a half-time therapist. And again, so that's for the Uba County Office of Ed. Okay, the last two slides are, are not about MHSAA. This is just maybe addressing some of the issues that I think that the board, some of the concerns that the board has had. And so I just wanted to address some of those for, for your benefit. So the top numbers there show kind of the, the split that we have as far as the clientele that we serve. So you can see a little over twenty-two hundred in Sutter County. And close to twenty-one hundred of our clients are from Uba County. As you know, there's about thirty thousand less people in Uba County. And so when you get that down as a percentage of the population, it's a slightly higher percentage of the Uba County population that we serve. And here's where, again, we see that fifty-fifty split. So about fifty-one percent of our clients are from Sutter County, while forty-nine percent are from Uba County. The second area where that doesn't hold true, as you see below there, is our fifty-one, fifty-holds. So the most recent data that we have from July to March of this year is about fifty-eight percent of our fifty-one, fifty-holds come from Uba County, with forty-two percent coming from Sutter County. And then the last slide I have for you is revenues. So to explain this, I think I need to kind of explain how the state views us. So we are a mental health plan that serves Medi-Cal beneficiaries. So in the remainder of the state, each county has its own mental health plan for Medi-Cal beneficiaries. So U, as you know, is the only bi-county mental health plan in the state. And so the state really views us, and when I, when I'm talking about the state, I'm talking about the Department of Healthcare Services. They really view us as one entity. So while we know there's fifty-eight counties in California, there's really fifty-seven county MHPs. And, and again, so the state just sees us in that way. So I know that the board's been interested in knowing a little bit more about the, the dollars that are allocated from Uba County. But because we don't receive the funding that way, we don't know the answer to that. We have reached out to the state controller about the split in revenue streams between the two counties. They say that they're unable to provide us with this information. They directed us to DHCS and the Department of Finance. DHCS would know the formula for the MHSAA funding, so we've reached out to them. They said that they need to do some research to figure that out and that they will be getting back to us. As of a couple of days ago, the Department of Finance had not yet responded to any of our inquiries. And that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions from the board?
Just as a matter of timing, I'm curious. You had some slides at the beginning about suicide prevention. Obviously, that's an issue that's come up recently. What is the number of youth that suicide every year in Uba County? What's the number of transitional youth that suicide in Uba County?
So those numbers are quite small, and maybe, you know, Dr. Lou is still here. She might have some of that, that data. That's typically data that's collected by California Department of Public Health and is held by public health entities. Typically speaking, if numbers are under ten, it's suppressed data, which means that we can't really share, you know, specifics about that. And I can, I can tell you that for youth suicides, it's, it's very low. It's probably similar, and, and I, I know for overall suicides, meaning adults and youth. In Uba County, it's a bit higher than state average. In Sutter County, it's a little bit lower than state average.
Any idea why the fifty-one, fifty for Uba County is so much higher than Sutter County?
I don't. That's something that certainly we could look at.
So is it, would you say the homeless population being two-thirds allocated to Uba County, one-third allocated to Sutter County? Are the fifty-one, fifty-holds primarily allocated to that? Is, is that, is that group largely indicative? Is that the group that is?
That's responsible for the, yeah. I, I, that, that's not, I haven't had that indication in any of the conversations that I've had with my staff. So why there is a larger number of fifty-one fifties in Uba County, there could be a lot of factors that play into that. But I don't think it's because there's more, that we're engaging more homeless folks in Uba County.
On, on the peer support group, I was curious just about the naming of the group, and this is probably silly. If it's peer support and we're funding it to pay, I assume, adult-trained counselors, then wouldn't that not be peers?
Right. Yeah, so it's, it's staff, and then they also have peers that are working in those areas as well.
They're not paying the students?
No, they're not paying the students.
Training the students to be support. So I was just curious, that seems odd name. All right, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Gary, any questions?
Okay, just a quick question. Your revenue and expenditure report, what was the last one you did? Is there one for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Uh, the revenue and expenditure report. Let's see, you have, Michelle, want to come up here?
No, it is, that one is due at the end of every January, and that was the last one we did. I do not know the actual year because sometimes we are a couple of years ahead or, or behind depending on it. But the last one that we did, that we sent in, was sent in at the end of January twenty-three.
That was twenty-twenty-one?
Probably, yes.
So there, so we're missing twenty-one, twenty-two?
Not missing, it'll be due next January.
Of twenty-four?
Right.
And this falls within whatever rules and regulations you have to do?
Correct. That's not unusual for a lot of our reports not to be as timely as you might want or such as with the updates, we're usually reporting on a couple of years be, behind and a year forward. So it is a little bit odd to look at. We report from the year behind and then we project into the future.
So are these reports updated on any timely basis? I mean, on, you know, in some organizations, there's, there's monthly or quarterly reports, but I'm not sure the relevance and of doing reports that are one or two years old.
I, I understand, and I know that within our fiscal division, they, they update things in a different way. These are the reports that we have to send into the state.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. You provided some numbers for, for Uba County versus Sutter County. And your, your premise is fifty-fifty is about a good, good cut?
Generally speaking, yeah.
You know, this based, the, the population of Uba County has grown significantly in the last couple of years. Have they taken that into account? The difference between the, the actual population and, and what, what it was three years ago?
Well, I think we took census data. So the last census data is what the ratio would have been based on.
So would I be correct in saying that the current amount of budget used by both counties, we're, we're fifty percent or somewhere close?
Well, I, I think that's something that we don't know, right? Because like I said, the funding just comes to us as Sutter County funding, essentially. So we don't have it divided between Uba County and Sutter County.
Okay, but if population is using is approximately fifty percent, then the, the used by county would be about fifty percent. Is that correct?
That's not necessarily how they do their formulas at the state.
Okay. And this year's, I, I understand there was a dollar amount that we were, we were counting on for support to Uba County. And we're not quite up to the dollar amount that was, was originally allocated. I don't know. That's, is that correct?
Oh, I think you're, you're referring to a, a, kind of a subset, not, not specifically on target with the Mental Health Service Act presentation today, but we were talking about funding for our public guardian. And we're working through that issue with behavioral health on making sure we have a kind of an equitable distribution between Uba and Sutter Counties to cover public guardian services, which is, is the board is aware. Public guardian services, I, I believe with CARE Act and, I'm sorry, with CARE Court, we're gonna have kind of an increased dependency, awareness of, of public guardian function. I think that's gonna become more of a, a highlight in the future, so. But yes, we are working through that to make sure that we have kind of an updated understanding between behavioral health and our public guardian to cover the costs associated with public guardian services.
Okay. All right. Now, I'm kind of concerned, we're a little lax in, in, in funding reports or letting us know what's, what's happening from year to year. And like you said, you know, you're, you're two years behind, and a lot happens in two years. Are we gonna, we're gonna be able to tighten that eye up?
Yeah, so we, we do share our budget every year with Uba County. I think we have a meeting next week to, to do that. And certainly, we can do more of that if the board would like and talk a little bit more about what our funding looks like, how it comes in, what it's spent on. And as far as the RERs go, I think, and Betsy can correct me, but essentially, the funding for MHSAA, because we go through this planning process, it's sort of allocated five years in advance. And what the RER does is the state kind of audits us and asks us to take account of all that funding and say, did you spend it in the year that it was supposed to be spent? And if not, it can roll over, but you only have a certain number of years to do that. And so I think it takes a couple of years to make sure that, you know, the state knows where the funding has gone. And we can say this is, these are the programs that we paid for. And then we account for, yes, this is money that we still have left. And if we don't spend it, it gets returned to the state.
I think that one of the things with, with MHSAA specifically, it's a very volatile funding because we get it based on the tax revenues and, and when they come in. So we may get, you know, generally, April and I think October, we get a lot because that's when people generally pay taxes. Other months, we may get nothing in. And so they say, here's your five-year forecast. Make us a plan on that five years. Well, two years, a lot can happen. Five years, anything can happen. And so that's why we have, we have to plan out five years in advance and then go back and show what we did while planning each year and looking what, at what comes in. So it's, it's a complex and, and frustrating system to use in terms of how the money comes in and what we have to do with it. So that one report, you're right, it, it's two years behind, but it's on one very, shall I say, small part. It's a true-up, if you will. But the other parts of funding, as Rick alluded to, we, we track in very different ways. I mean, including the MHSAA funding, we have different ways of tracking what's being spent on a monthly basis, et cetera.
Well, we've got, we've got a building that we're putting up next to Sheriff's Farm. Mental health is a big part of that. And sometimes we don't have the figures to, to work, accurate figures to work with on our, our planning. Is there some way we can kind of tighten up on our auditing of that? That, because it, it's like you said, five years, a lot can happen. But still, year by year, we should be able to, to see how far we're out.
If, if I could, through the, through the chair. And the, the revenue source, the Mental Health Services Act revenue source, Rick started off the presentation letting, letting the board know, you know, it was established by the voters through Prop sixty-three just under twenty years ago. And, and there's, there's definitely a, a process. The, the reason why we're there before the board today is for the board to approve the, the, the plan for twenty-two, twenty-three. But the voters, there's indications from the governor that there may be something on the horizon. And Rick, it's maybe a good opportunity to educate the board on, you know, back to the vulnerability of this funding. We may, they may be going back out to the voters to, to reshuffle the deck.
Yeah, right. So in, the, the governor is hoping to get an item on the ballot for fall twenty-twenty-four that would change the way that mental health, or sorry, MHSAA funding is used. So the idea would be that if the initiative passes, that essentially thirty percent of our funding would get swept away. And that funding would be used instead for housing for, for homeless. So that may be, you know, a great idea. We do need more housing for homeless, unfortunately. That housing is gonna be built on closing programs for MHSAA clientele within the community. And so you may see some changes in the number of clients that we serve, the programs that we have, et cetera, if that ends up passing in the fall of twenty-twenty-four.
Thirty percent's a big cut.
It's a big cut. There are also some other possibilities that, that they're talking about, such as taking away some of the PEI funding. So essentially, having one pot instead of having three different pots. And then having it all be CSNS, and then we would decide if we wanted to fund PEI. So a lot of that outreach that we do in the schools would be in jeopardy as well.
All right, all right. I'll review and work to keep us abreast of the changes from Sacramento because not really thrilled with their, their homeless policy and expenditures. You know, I got to two or five facilities and pretty nice facilities and about three hundred thousand apiece. I think we can do something better and more efficient, so. Okay.
So the action item before the board today is, is to approve the, the, the plan that Rick has presented the highlights of.
All right, well, let's, no more questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll come back to the board.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Also, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, item next is ordinance of public hearings.
Any person may speak about any subject of a concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via, oh, sorry, I'm reading the public communications one. I, no one stop me. Go ahead and read ordinances of public hearing. If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Uba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Uba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Okay, item one forty-three, community development. Hold public hearing, waive second reading, and adopt ordinance of ending eight point five, the title eight, regarding Bullards Bar Recreation Area.
Your chair and fellow board members, this is Mike Lee with Community Development. And this is the second hearing. It was presented to you last board meeting. And, but in a quick summary, it's due to demand and interest. We are proposing to modify the, the houseboat require, allowed minimum or, or maximum sizes on new Bullards Bar reservoir from sixty feet long and fifteen feet wide to seventy feet long and eighteen feet wide. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, any questions? All right, any questions on the board? No, no questions on the board. All right, so we're going to extend the length of the houseboats there. All right. And we, did we open the public hearing?
I don't think we did.
Okay, open the public hearing and any questions to the public? Okay. All right, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing and approve.
A second.
We have a motion, closing public hearing. And all those in favor, say aye. Do we need a roll call? Oh, roll call vote. Okay, it says down that roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuer.
Aye.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was quick. County Administrator Ordinance, hold public hearing, wave first reading and introduce repealing and reenacting. All its use.
Good morning, Board. Sean Powers, Assistant County Administrator. Before you today is kind of our annual update to the countywide master fee schedule. Once a year, the county administrator's office gets together with all of the departments and reviews our fee schedule. Both to look at what the cost of administering business and the fees associated with those services. And also any cleanup items of descriptions or things that need minor revisions. So with that, this year, we have a good series of cleanup and what I would call modest increases to the schedule. We definitely have our thirty four page master schedule, but the majority of all the, all the changes are actually consolidated. Into the summary of changes, which is about a seven pager showing some of the descriptions and some of the modest fee increases on some of the services. We do have some significant changes at the airport. We are going to discuss those separately. And we'll have our airport manager come up to discuss those. I'd like to definitely thank all the departments for working with us. We do do a comprehensive review of all this material and Michelle Logan in our office helps pull us all together. I do want to highlight just a few changes, just to show a few items of the more modest on the significant side for some of the changes. In animal care services, we're going to start providing vaccinations for for animals there. So with that, we want to have that fee on the schedule. Public Works, we are adding a new type of permit review process, which is a great service to the public. So we are adding that one. Parks, we do have a new fee for Sycamore Ranch and then a modest increase to the cost of the reservations there for our cost of business as well. And then also a great item that we finally tackled is kind of cleaning up how we charge for copies in the county. We had a few departments that had a fee schedule simply for the fact that they do charge for copies. So we consolidated those into a more efficient. Process for copy charges and return payment fees. This really simplifies our schedule and cleans it up a little bit and consolidates it down. So with that, I'll actually turn it over to Jason Copping, our airport manager. He has some items of more significance on what was happening with our fee schedule specifically at the airport.
Okay.
Okay, open the public hearing, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Chair. Thank you supervisors. I'm Jason Copping, the airport manager for Yuba County. And as Sean introduced. I am going to pull up a set of slides briefly. And simply talk about the changes in fees that are being proposed at the Yuba County Airport. I think the first thing I want to bring up is just kind of narrow the scope. Of where we're specifically talking. And to do that, I figured I'd start with Google Earth and the imagery that it provides. And just kind of show you our Burger Road, the entrance to the airport, where the airport office is. I feel many of you have stopped by there. In the last couple of years, and then show you to the south of that office inside the fence. Where we have the county owned tea hangers, we have some storage spaces. That we would like to adjust the rental rates on based on F A A requirements. And again, F A A stands for Federal. Aviation Administration. Full sentences. Good. The number of spaces we're dealing with are those leftover spaces that don't fully form a T, as you see in this diagram where an aircraft traditionally will fit. However, we do have aviation purposes and aviation uses where some of these spaces are being occupied by aircraft that do fit. Or aircraft projects that are current or active that would fit. To kind of show the corollary to that, there are spaces at the airport where an aviation use is not required. However, I think in general, it's it's safe to say that those spaces are around the periphery of the airport property itself. Oftentimes finding themselves outside of the physical fence. Where you see the industrial development surrounding the airport. So in the top left corner here, you have Skyway Drive. Both east and west side of the road. You also have near the entrance of the airport, both north and south of the entrance. At our Burger Road and Sky Harbor, where we have. The ability to see in what is called the Airport Layout Plan, and that's where these images were taken from. You'll see the word released and it's highlighted in faint yellow. Just kind of calling it out that the the F A A has released this land from its obligation to serve an aviation purpose. All later spaces at the airport, tea hangers, aprons, whatnot, all of those are to support an aviation purpose. And that will tick and tie back into why we're increasing the rental rates. Last year, we addressed the tea hanger spaces by introducing, as you see here. Two fees in our fee structure that was approved by the board. One was a derelict dilapidated annual fee. So if your aircraft is nonfunctional, it's a flat fifteen hundred dollars a year. And then if it is not operational and inside one of our. Tea hangers were through the board have been able to. Have the fee available to us to charge one point seven five times the monthly rate. That is in our quarterly updates through C D S A. You've seen the increase in active aircraft and the decrease. In dilapidated aircraft at our airport. It is largely because of these types of tools that we've been able to have those conversations with aviators. And we're down to our last handful of of holdouts where we're still working through getting those aircraft active. And then also. Or freeing up the space for another active aircraft. We are requesting that the board recommend the approval of a change in the rates. In the tea hanger storage spaces. Primarily to comply with. F A A requirements and to really jump to what those requirements are, I think the quickest and easiest way to speak to that. Is to simply share what is published by the F A A and it's highlighted in yellow here. Which is that. It is the obligation of the sponsor, which is your airport manager, to minimize the length of time to provide hangar space for those on a waiting list. And require non-aviation users pay a fair market rental rate. For the hangar or space. Or return it to an aviation use. And that's what we're requesting now. And so you're seeing some pretty significant changes where we're actually catching up from many, many, many years of not having those. Fees follow a market rate structure. So you're seeing a significant jump. And at that, I'll just pause and and ask if there's any questions at this.
Any questions?
Regarding the changes.
Any questions?
I have a question. So if if we raise those rates on those end units. And then somebody does rent one for an aviation use. If they had an aircraft that fit in there, when then will it go back down to the square footage rate of the tea hangers?
The answer is yes, I will be back in front of this board. With that agreement in hand. And it's through a lease that we would do that. And I would be back here speaking to you on behalf of that tenant with an aviation purpose at an aviation rate. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, any other further questions? Any questions for the public? All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a. Motion and close the public hearing.
Oh. Was there more than just that? There are other fees? And it?
Uh, no, Chairman. That actually concludes our presentation. We had staff available here for any questions, but if you'd like to close the hearing, do a roll call vote. Much appreciated.
Okay. The motion. All right.
Second it.
All right, motion is second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll come to the board and the staff members' reports. Mr. Blazer, Supervisor Blazer.
Okay, so the next two days, I'm going to be down at a C S A C conference. C S A C is. Your California State Association of Counties and they did, there was a press release because there's going to be a. Summit of sorts involving C S A C and the California League of Cities. And it's all focused on homeless, which is seems to be relative to other things we've been talking about. So that's going to be the primary thing that they're going to do besides all their other committees and legislation things. So. It'll be interesting to see, especially what Rick brought up about funds being diverted from, I think. From mental health to homeless housing. I think that's what the gist of it. So I'll see if that comes up in this conference. Thanks.
Affordable housing is the key. And affordable, huh huh?
Yeah, it's affordable housing is a part of the puzzle. I don't know how big a part of the puzzle. It seems like the mental side of it is maybe larger and it doesn't seem like diverting funds from mental to affordable housing makes sense, but. That's just me.
Watch those urges of common sense and logic. All right.
Speaking of conferences, I think a lot of us are going to be attending one in two weeks. Is our meeting canceled or are we going to be doing it by Zoom and announcing room numbers in D C?
Are we going to have more than two?
I think only two of us are gone.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah.
So I'll give you a room number and I'll zoom in.
Okay. If if it's on county business, yeah, that they're, the county council can go over the 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 rules with the board on that, but.
All right, chat from the way through.
Yep, we'll go over those with.
Okay.
Fantastic. Other stuff that's going on, post Happy Easter to everyone. Thank you for the public comments. I really enjoyed the trust presentation. I'm always at, when people talk about restrictions on what I can do for my land, I always like, you know, hurl up and then you talk about, you know, overall. Keeping our community intact for what it is, not having urban sprawl. And it's like, oh, those are really good things. I I like that. So it's always, there's two sides to every coin. So I did enjoy your presentation. And the idea of having some of it at the Forgotten Warrior, at first I'm like, that seems like not the type of clientele. That would be coming from the Bay Area would enjoy that. Yet at the same time, I thought he made some excellent points about there would be some value there to partner with. So looking forward to see what you guys can do.
All right, Gary.
So a couple of items. First off, wanted to say thanks to Public Works. I've noticed with the sunshine, they're out trying to. Be proactive as possible about taking care of some of the weeds that are already sprouting up. And so it's great to see them out there doing that. And down in Plumas Lake, they're joined by the R D seven eighty four goats who are helping them with that. So a lot of goats down in the community. Occasionally they get out, which is also entertaining, but. And then tomorrow, I'll be down at Secog for a lunch meeting with Congressman Vera and the Federal Railroad Administrator. He's in town from Washington, D C. We'll be talking about some of the Megan Region projects, including. Valley Rail and North Valley Rail. So that's extension of Ace Train in San Joakines from the Stockton area. Up through Sacramento and ultimately up to Chico with two stations proposed here in Yuba County. Also, as mentioned by Supervisor Fuer, he and I will be out of town on water agency and county business next Tuesday or two weeks from today. And I anticipate having a scheduled conflict and being unable to attend the meeting most likely. So. But a heads up on that. And then finally, Happy Birthday to Mary. So.
Oh.
Happy birthday.
I missed that.
We'll try that to sing. Go ahead.
So I've had a busy couple of weeks. I had a meeting with Marysville Joint Unified. I think most of you guys met with 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 them. And let's see, had a meeting with the city, Yuba City. On Island Road, because they own property on our side of the river. And they're working on barricading that off. So. Keeping keeping people from moving in there. I guess they've gotten cleaned up and people moved back a couple of times. Tended the Marysville Business Association meeting. Two weeks ago, Camp Townville Community Partnership, I had a. Town meet and greet type thing. They invited me to. It was really neat to see so many people in their community show up for that. Feather River Quality Meeting. And let's see, I went and met with Congressman Kevin Kiley. And then also went to Doug Lamoffa's open house and met with some of his staff on. Things they could do together to help. Help me get things done here in the county. And I guess the highlight was my. Attended the lip sync competition for Shady Creek Outdoor School and the Yuba Water Agency had a team and was. Did a very good job. They missed you, Gary.
They won.
Won again.
Yeah.
All right, well. I went to the walk across the bridge for autumn that was well attended. There must have been a couple hundred people there. And. Found out I couldn't walk all the way across the bridge. But I also attended Mr. Kiley's. Meeting in Yuba City and interesting individual. I think he's very actively involved. So. That's pretty much it for for me.
Yeah, the county council, anything?
Nothing from the county council, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Kevin?
Just something real brief, and I've brought it to the board's attention previously. By County Ambulance has a contract with both Yuba and Sutter Counties to provide ambulance services. There was an article in the newspaper last week, I believe it was, just highlighting that the. Issue that they're having retaining paramedics and there there's definitely a national issue with this on a shortage of paramedics. They're working through that. Just to make sure the board's aware, you know, you have Sierra, Sacramento Valley, they're the J P A. It's it's about a dozen counties. They're the ones that manage the the ambulance services agreement for both Yuba and Sutter Counties. They recently issued a, I guess you could call it a performance improvement plan. They basically let By County Ambulance know that they need to continue making progress on their paramedic shortage issue. They gave them a deadline of June thirtieth to make that progress. And if not, then S S V will reevaluate, you know, next steps. And then kind of coupled with that, and this is really what I wanted to bring to the board's attention. The contract with By County Ambulance, it's been in place for forty two years. It goes all the way back to nineteen eighty one. It expires at the end of this calendar year. And it has been kind of renewed over the years. S S V has taken a serious look at whether or not it would be appropriate to just do an open R F P. This go around. And so if they do, that that's a very, it's a, it's a lengthy process. It'll take more more than six months to kind of go through that process, but. That that item will come before the board, just so the board's aware that the R F P would be occurring. But I just wanted to put that on the board's radar.
Shortest personnel is nationwide, almost in every field. So, you know, it's.
That that that's what'll be, if anything, this is really just back to to doing our due diligence. To, you know, an R F P process. It it may be that there isn't another provider that can enhance services beyond what By County can provide, but we at least need to, you know, or at least S S V is feeling that there is a need to at least. See, see who's out there. Is there is there better service or is By County really the best service? And then if so, how can we improve upon their performance?
I I don't remember the number, but I thought I saw an ad for a signing bonus. Was it like thirty thousand dollars for a paramedic?
Yeah, it it could be. I I I know that they're also, you know, sponsoring folks to pay for their schooling. I mean, there there's all sorts of incentives that By County is trying to do to.
Wow.
Bring in more paramedics.
Okay. All right. I think we got four closed session items and Mary, you don't have anything?
No. Nothing, thank you.
Okay. And we get four closed session items as noted on the agenda and we're going to take a five minute break.
That's. That was two, that was two hours about that were our pass back.
Yubasutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units. Outdoor R V and vehicle parking. Moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.